Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, April 25th, 2018 to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes. Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Gamble?
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. And the meeting has been properly posted. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. Item three on the agenda is the oath of office for new and re-elected board members. So if our clerk, Mr. Alexandrovich, could go to the front, and then also Mr. Lewis, Mr. Gamble, and myself.
How far in front do you want to go?
That's fine. I guess we'll just go alphabetically.
Mr. Reitering. Anne, do you swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of your office of Franklin School Board member to the best of your ability to help you, God?
I do.
You swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of Franklin School Board member to the best of your ability to help you, God? I will. You swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of your office of Franklin School Board member to the best of your ability to help you, God? I will.
Congratulations. We'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? It's all moved. Motion by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Is there any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is the Franklin High School Forensics presentation. And we have Mrs. Hepworth and her students, if you'd like to come forward.
Before I share information with you, where would you like the students to perform?
Do they need a microphone or do they project?
They can project. Last time we performed just over there, if that's acceptable.
Mr. Nielsen, do you think that's fine?
That's fine. We'll just turn this microphone in that direction.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, School Board and community members. My name is Catherine Hepworth, and I'm the Director of the Forensics Program at Franklin High School. This year, I completed my 14th year coaching in the Wisconsin Forensics Association. Thank you for allowing us to attend tonight's meeting. We thought it was time, again, to share our success since our last visit on April 27th, 2016. Forensics is competitive speaking and acting. Students choose one of 17 categories ranging from acting to speech writing. Some students even choose two categories and perform two pieces, which means if they make it through three preliminary rounds and into the final power rounds for both categories, they will have given a performance eight times that day. We travel to tournaments in southeastern Wisconsin, competing against anywhere from 100 to 400 students at every tournament. Since I took over the program in 2010, we have had many successes along the way, each year better than the last, but this year has been phenomenal. I am so lucky and so blessed to work with such a talented group of teenagers. To quote one of my favorite musicals, "The King and I," Mrs. Anna says it best, "It's a very ancient saying, but a true and honest thought, that if you become a teacher by your pupils, you'll be taught." This team has taught me that competitive public speaking gives kids a voice and a safe environment to speak their mind on topics they are passionate about. Furthermore, students have a lot of autonomy, which empowers them to learn more about the world around them. They choose their category. They choose their specific topic within that category. They choose their goals for the season. Each week on Saturdays, they perform three times, for if they make it to power rounds, and they receive immediate feedback from judges. This feedback is reviewed and evaluated by both themselves and the coaches that improvements can be made that week during practice, and then the cycle starts again. This lasts from January to April. Because of our team's passion and commitment to improving our skills, we have had our most successful season. Please consider these statistics. Our participation numbers continue to be in the 40s. We continue to be a part of an honor society, the National Speech and Debate Association, and this year, all but two of our 13 freshmen earned merit status, 25 points, and four freshmen earned honor status, 75 points. In the 2017-18 season, we achieved many firsts. We had the most seniors on the team, 10. Our 13 freshmen were the strongest freshman group yet, with more of them making it to powers than any other freshman group before them. We had the most powers at a tournament, 21, at Pius X. We had two students finish first and second in the same category, Priyanka Iyer and Katie Harrison, special occasion, both of whom are here tonight. We had the same student finish first in two different categories, Orva Ahmad in Poetry and Farago, she is also here tonight. We finished fourth or better our entire season. Of the seven tournaments we attended prior to state, we earned first place three times. The students said it was not allowed to bring all of our trophies tonight. Lastly, our 24 entries at state achieved seventh place in Division One, but total at that state tournament, there were 825 student competitors from 76 schools around the state. Three students made it to semifinals. All of them are here tonight, sophomore Tyler Kelly, sophomore Angie Cartezzi, and junior Shreya Mahdi. Four students made it to semifinals and then onto finals, all of them seniors. Katie Harris, sixth place in special occasion, Priyanka Iyer, fourth in special occasion, Orva Ahmad, third in Farago, and Trinity Hanson, first in poetry. Reading, writing, speaking, and listening become very meaningful and personal for students on the forensics team. These experiences are possible because of support from the school board, high school administration, teachers, and parents. We strive to make our program the best it can be to provide students with the confidence to succeed in their future endeavors. At this time, I would like to introduce our first speaker, sophomore Tyler Kelly. He needs your help for his speech. He would like you to name possible topics. He's in a category known as impromptu, and he will pick one of those topics and on the spot write and deliver a speech in five minutes.
So from anyone?
Circus?
Circus? We usually take three, so is...
Birdwatching.
Birdwatching?
Children.
Children? I will be speaking on children today.
In our society, one of our favorite things to do is label people. Whether we're labeling their race, ethnicity, gender, or age status, we love having a way to call somebody out. It's an easy way we can sort people. One of these ways that we can sort people is either a child or an adult. Today, I'm going to talk about children. And you see, recently, we've had a little bit of a problem. We used to have a very simple definition of the word "child," somebody who's not an adult. But when does somebody become an adult and not a child anymore? With events such as Parkland, putting children into political positions, we do not know when you have more or less matured enough to take adult actions. First, I'm going to take my position of when a child should be. Then I'm going to talk about the different issues where it is very relevant. And finally, I'm going to explain to you why we need to give children more power in our society today. So in my opinion, it's not necessarily that important when a child is determined to be an adult. The key factor is that it's consistent. You see, it frustrates people worldwide if they're told you can have this adult responsibility but not another. For example, I can get my driver's license at the age of 16, but I can't vote until I'm 18 and drink until I'm 21. Now, you may say, yes, these are different responsibilities. There's a different age in which you deserve to earn all of them, but I've, and some of my friends, may argue that we deserve all of our rights at the same age. We could, for example, join the military, which is 18. Now, children don't really know where they are from the ages of like 16 to 21. They're like, I'm kind of an adult because I can like work and drive, but I'm also not really an adult because I can't drink, and it's very confusing. You see, this frustration could be ended quite easily. You could say, at 18, you're an adult, or at 21, you're an adult. Scientific research has proven that your brain does not fully develop until the age of 21. However, I can still have the responsibility of driving a car at 16. I don't know how this is fair. We may need freedom, such as being able to work at 16, but I'm not responsible enough to join the military? It's a very strange debate. Now, you see, you may say children are pretty irrelevant. You see, that's kind of how we've always been taught of. They sit there, they grow up, and they learn. They hear something and it sticks. You're learning how to be an adult. That's the role of one's childhood. Well, that's all changed recently. If you look on the news, it is very likely you'll hear from student activists, if you've been watching within the past month, whether it's David Hogg or any other's school activist, it's truly became amazing to see these less than 18-year-olds making an impact on the world. Personally, I would argue that they should have rights such as to vote, but that is just my opinion. You see, if we value children higher, it will have a tremendous amount of benefits. Children like David Hogg will become much more common. This is because a lot of people forget a simple fact: children are our future. At the end of the day, we are the next generation. Whether you like it or not, we will eventually have to rule the world. That may be scary for a lot of you to think about today. However, this is why it is extremely important that we give children defined rules, invest in them, and make sure that we prepare them to be the leaders of tomorrow, because they are the most important thing on this planet. Thank you.
Next, sophomore Angie Cartezzi will perform one of her four storytelling pieces.
So one of the rules in storytelling is you have to sit in a chair, so that's what So I have four stories, and there's four categories of stories, and you pick a story for each one, so this is my novel story. On your way to visit grandma, a little girl named Molly is captured by pirates. However, little Molly is a lot more mighty than these pirates thought. In Cornelia Thunk's Pirate Girl, a novel story for young elementary school-age students, these pirates soon learn to never underestimate the power of a war. Captain Firebeard was the terror of the high seas. His ship, the horrible Haddock, was faster than the wind over the waves. Whenever the horrible Haddock appeared on the horizon, the knees of honest seafaring folk would shake like jelly. Firebeard had a fierce crew. His helmsman was Morgan O'Leary. His cook was Cutlass Tom. Bill the Ball, Willie Wood and Hand, and 20 more terrible pirates made up the rest of the motley bunch. Whenever Firebeard's crew boarded a ship, nothing was safe. They stole the silver spoons, the pots and pans, the hammocks, and the sails. And of course, they stole all the casks rum. One day, Firebeard rubbed a ship he really should have left alone. Onboard was a little girl named Molly. Molly was off on a trip to visit her grandma. The pirates leaped on board with a ear-splitting roar. Molly tried to hide behind the ropes, but Morgan O'Leary soon fished her out.
What shall we do with her?
He asked. Dare with us, you fool, bellowed Firebeard. Her parents will pay a handsome ransom for such a light of treasure. And if they don't, we can beat her to the sharks! You'll be sorry for this, said Molly, but Morgan O'Leary rolled her up like a hanger and tossed her on board to the horrible Haddock. When the sun went down, Bill the Ball dragged Molly to have a meeting with the captain. All right, tell me your parents' name and address, or else! He growled. We'll not, Molly growled back. If I told you my mother's name, you'd all cry like babies. At this, the pirates howled and locked her. So Molly was put to work. She peeled potatoes and cleaned boots. She polished Cutlasses, patched the sails, and scrubbed the deck. Soon, every bone in her body ached. Three times a day, Firebeard asked her, name and address, but Molly just smiled. Beat her to the sharks, said Willie Wood and Hand, but Firebeard just ground his teeth and said, she'll talk before long! Every night, the pirates had a party. They drank rum, staggered across the deck, danced on the ship's rigging, and bawled out the rudest songs. Molly had a plan. While the pirates were carousing, she wrote out a secret message and popped it into an empty box. Then, when all the pirates were safely snoring in their box, shh, Molly threw her message into the sea. She did this every night. One night, the pirates parted until dawn, but this time, they fell asleep right on the deck. Shh. Molly tiptoed through the piles of arms and legs and threw her message into the sea. Splash! Hey, what was that? Said Willie Wood and Hand. All the pirates staggered over the rail. It's a message in a bottle, the all cried. Bring it to me now, growled Firebeard. So all the pirates dove into the deep blue sea. They searched and searched, but Molly's message had bobbed away, soaking wet. All the pirates crawled back onto the deck, cursing. Tell me what you wrote, growled Firebeard, but Molly just kicked out his wooden leg. Now it's time to beat her to the sharks, he roared, but a cry from above stopped him. Pirates, shouted a ten-pipe ted from the crow's nest. Nonsense, scuffed Firebeard. We're the only pirates around here. But he was wrong. A big ship with red flags was speeding toward them. A giant black flag with a skull and crossbones fluttered from its mast. What the name of the men of June's beard is, that, asked Firebeard. The ship with red sails drew closer and closer. Barbarous Bertha stood at the prow, swinging her cutlass. Wait until she sees my hands, said Molly. They're red and raw, peeling potatoes. That will make my mom mad as all. Firebeard and his pirates groaned with terror. Soon, Barbarous Bertha approached the horrible Haddock. Her crew swung themselves over the rail with a terrible roar. At last, my pirate girl, she cried, throwing Molly high into the air. We got your message. Your grandmother was beginning to wonder where you were. Now, how nasty can we be to these piratical thinkofus? Well, said Molly, that's easy. From that day on, Firebeard and his pirates had no time to think about raiding ships. Willie Wood and Hand scrubbed the deck. Morgan O'Leary and Cutlass Tom chopped vegetables from morning until night. Captain Firebeard cleaned Barbarous Bertha's boots 14 times a week, and Molly was finally able to visit her grandma.
Now, senior and team captain Jack Laytonen will give you a selection from his oratory speech.
So we all know that motivation is the reason we have our behavior in a particular way, but what is it really? What goes on in our heads, our brains, that make us feel this way? According to neuropsychotherapist.com, the control center for motivation is located in the prefrontal cortex. So if you were to imagine I was holding a brain about yea big, the prefrontal cortex would be the section right in the front, and it is probably the most important part, because it is actually you. It controls just about everything about your personality through a multitude of what we call executive functions. Executive functions relates to the ability to differentiate among her footing thoughts, like save indifference, better and best, future consequences, working towards a defined goal, and of course, motivation. But in order for these functions to happen, dopamine must be present in the brain. Dopamine is the one neurotransmitter that everybody seems to know about. It's like the Kim Kardashian of neurotransmitters. Everybody knows what it is, just not why it's famous. It's also addictive and causes a lot of drama, so the comparison makes sense. Mercy Correa, behavioral neuroscientist, explains dopamine as follows. It was believed that dopamine regulated pleasure and roadwork, and was released when we obtained something that satisfies us. But in fact, latest scientific evidence shows that this neurotransmitter acts before that. It actually encourages us to act. So we now know that motivation is caused by dopamine through the rager in our prefrontal cortex, but how does this relate to students and their lack of motivation in schools? So we all know there's a lot of similarities between schools and prisons. They're both overcrowded, have strict rules, and terrible lunches. But all joking aside, I do have a point. Jack Brem, famous author and psychologist, might argue that students in their final semester are like prisoners near the end of their sentences. Brem's theory suggests that as the release date for both groups get closer, they become more aware of the current constraints on their freedom, to the point where many can't help themselves but assert this freedom prematurely. For prisoners, this may mean breaking common rules, some offenses leading to an extended prison sentence. For high schoolers, this could be losing motivation to the point of putting off homework, skipping class, or being so lazy they start to fail required courses. According to Vanderbilt.edu, when students are denied choice, the amount of dopamine that fires in the brain is drastically reduced. And as discussed before, dopamine encouraged us to act, but if this act is something that is forced upon us or something we don't enjoy, we don't have the same dopamine levels in the brain. So students, specifically seniors, begin to realize a number of choices they aren't making and freedoms they really don't have. They become discouraged while completing tasks, which causes a drop in dopamine, and it results in a drop in motivation. Thank you.
Finally, senior and team captain Orva Ahmad will present a selection from her Farago piece.
So Farago is basically where you choose a topic you would like to speak about, and then you choose prose, poetry, or any other kind of written media, and you assemble a program around it. So today, I'll be sharing one of my pieces with you today. Orva?
Head north, forest meadows circle toward West Forest Hill.
What is this? 95 out of 100? Where did the other five points go? Did they grow legs and run away? Did you keep them? As a child of immigrant parents, my childhood has been unique. From learning to read and write in my native tongue on the weekends to memorizing math tables with my mom, my parents have never forgotten what made them come to America in the first place: a better education for their children and a safer home life. Immigrants are the backbone of our country. The melting pot of America continues to diversify by the day, yet immigrants face immense struggles as they change from one life to another. In the following uninterrupted Farago on immigrant struggles, we explore the poem Head Over Heels by Ami Mahmoud, the essay How to Get Your Green Card in America by Sarah Matthews, and finally, the spoken word, The Unwritten Letter from My Immigrant Parents by Muna Abdallah. All of these stories exemplify what it is like to pick up one's life and to begin again, a Farago without transitions. They hand me the microphone. The woman says, the 1 millionth refugee just left South Sudan. Can you comment? I feel my feet rub back and forth on the heels. My mother bought me, begging the question, do we stay, or is it safer to choose flight? My mind echoes through the numbers. 1 million is gone. 400,000 dead in Darfur, 2 million displaced, and this lump takes over my throat as if each of those bodies have built a grave right here in my esophagus. Our once country, all north and south, east and west, so restless denial couldn't hold us together, and you ask me to summarize. They talk about the numbers as if this isn't still happening, as if 5 million didn't just die in Syria, as if 500,000 are still making their final stand at the bottom of the Mediterranean, as if there aren't entire volumes full of fact sheets about our genocides, and you ask me to write one. Fact: We never talked over breakfast because the warplanes would swallow our voices. Fact: My grandfather didn't want to leave home, so he died in a war zone. Fact: A burning bush without God is just a fire. And measure the distance between what I know and what is safe to say on a microphone. Do I mention displacement, sorrow? Do I mention the violence? How it's never as simple as what you see on TV? How there are weeks worth of fear before the camera is on? Do I mention our bodies? How there are 60% water, but they still burn like druppo and making fuel of our sacrifice? Do I mention? Do I mention how the men died first? Mothers forced to watch the slaughter as they came for our children scattering them like stars until our homes sank? That even castles sink at the bite of the bomb? Do I mention? Do I mention that the elderly are heroes? Too weak to run, too expensive to shoot? How do we march them into the fire? Their walking takes keeping the flames alive? It sounds too harsh. It sounds too harsh for a bundle of wires and an audience to swallow too relentless. Like the valley that filled with the putrid smoke of our deaths is a better inverse. Will you listen better if I say it softly? If you don't see me cry, will you listen better? Why does every word feel like I'm saying my last? 30 seconds for the soundbite, and now 3 minutes for the poem. My tongue goes dry the same way we died, becoming ash without ever having felt hope.
Could I ask a question of the students? How do you explain to someone that you'd like to recruit to be in forensics what forensics
Oh, it is good.
It's a good, totally prompting thing. I usually say it's competitive speech, and I usually break it down into three different categories. We have what we call speech categories, which is just like what me and Jack did, which is where we are going to try to inform you on something, whether it be demonstrating, informing about a political issue, or about literally any random thing on earth. Those are all kinds of things we do. Competitive acting, which is more like what Angie did, which could be acting out a story, acting out a book, whatever you want it to be. And then finally, being interpretation of literature, which is more like what Orva did, which would be either interpreting a poem, piece of prose, or some combination like what she did.
Yeah, I also like to tell people that it's like probably the most practical of like the clubs and activities offered, because we like learn how to talk in front of people, which is like a life skill that's everywhere.
Yeah, we're overcoming the number one fear in the world, which is public speaking? Yes, over more people in this country feel fear of public speaking than death heights, water spiders.
Yes, over more people in this country feel fear of public speaking than death heights, water spiders.
We have like a, we have locker posters, and they say the number one fear of America is public speaking, and we do it for fun.
Forensics is really a way to explore your passions and to find a, it really gives you an outlet to say what you want to say. Many of us don't have that kind of platform to like express what makes us passionate, so it really gives us that opportunity.
You can tell you have fun and you support each other, and you're fantastic.
Thank you.
In addition to what everyone else kind of said, I would kind of explain that usually. And I usually also tell people what it's, what it's kind of meant for me. I usually say that it's been the most transformative activity that I've ever done. And it's also like, it's not just public speaking, it's just speaking, and it's just, it's walking into a room and being comfortable enough to, to, to look someone in the eye and tell them exactly what you mean and tell it passionately and fill a room with your presence, you know? It's just, it's the number one, biggest confidence booster I've ever had in my entire 18 years of life.
Yeah, I can say that it's, it's really helped me all. I work the drive-through at Taco Bell. Being able to like talk to the customers, I would say it helped a lot there and probably a lot of other jobs.
Yeah, and on top of all that, this is really one of the most supportive groups of people that we can be in. And I know we all recognize it as that, and I even know other teachers, not even just Miss Hepworth, throughout the school will tell people, "Go join forensics if you don't have something to do." It's one of the greatest things that literally any person can do, and I truly believe that literally anyone could figure out a way to both be on the team and be successful. Because back in seventh grade when I started this, I was god awful.
Yeah, can give you a voice and give you confidence. And for me at least, this has kind of been a stepping stone, and it has motivated me to like make my own nonprofit and stuff like that. So it can really push you in directions you never knew you would go in the first place.
She started her own nonprofit, and then Priyanka and Katie Paris started the Voices of FHS, and they put on their first event earlier in the fall. To see them in a different capacity and to know when our students graduate and hear their stories when they come back, I think it's just really empowering for the other students on the team and definitely rewarding for me as a coach.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six is community comment. Are there any community members who would like to step up to the microphone and make a comment tonight? Any comment? All right, hearing none. Then we will move on to item seven, the election of the 2018, 2019 Board Officers. And just a couple of comments on that. We will use secret ballots, which are only permitted for election of officers. Nominations do not require a second. In the case of only one nomination for an office, we will have a voice vote unless any board member prefers secret balloting for all voting. Are there any board members who do not want voice voting in the case of one nomination? Okay. You have ballots and pens in front of you, and Ms. Day will collect the ballots after voting and read the results. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none, I will now take nominations for the Office of Board President. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Janet Evans for Board President.
We have a nomination for Janet Evans for Board President. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations for Board President are closed. Then according to the rules that I just read, we'll have a vote, a voice vote. All those in favor of Janet Evans for Board President, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then abstention, then Janet Evans is Board President. Then now we move on to Vice President. Are there any nominations for Vice President? Any nominations?
I nominate Tim Nielsen.
Nomination for Tim Nielsen for Vice President. And are there any other nominations for Vice President? Any other nominations? Hearing none, then nominations for Vice President are closed. And we'll now have a voice vote. All those in favor of Tim Nielsen for Vice President, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Tim Nielsen is Vice President. Congratulations. And then we will move on to Treasurer. Are there any nominations for Treasurer? Any nominations?
I'll nominate Linda Witkowski for Treasurer.
Okay, we have a nomination for Linda Witkowski for Treasurer. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, then nominations for Treasurer are closed. All those in favor of Linda Witkowski for Treasurer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Linda Witkowski is Treasurer. Congratulations. And now I'm looking for nominations for Clerk. Do we have a nomination for Clerk?
I'd like to nominate Alan, Alan, Mr. Allen.
We have a nomination for Alan Alexandrovich for Clerk. Are there any other nominations for Clerk? Any other nominations? Then nominations are, for Clerk are closed. All those in favor of Alan Alexandrovich for Clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, and Alan Alexandrovich is Clerk. Congratulations. And the voting, voting for officers is closed. Congratulations to all the officers for the 2018-19 school year. And now we move on to approval of the consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Item nine is school board announcements. Do we have any announcements?
They was fantastic.
Oh, yeah.
They was fantastic. They sold out on their second Saturday last night, so that was neat.
Very good.
I don't see anything for school visits, so we do that.
Yeah, we'll put it on, it's under lia, we'll put it under liaisons. And also, Mr. Kraus doesn't, Steve doesn't get many accolades, but I'm sure he did a fantastic job up in the light booth, so, yeah.
And he would, he would, if he were here to hear that, say it's his crew. He really, really works well with our students who are in the stage crew, and they do, they learn so much and do such a great job.
I do want to announce to the board, I'm going to assume all board members received the email yesterday from Connect's Learning Center. It could go to spam. If you didn't get it, take a look. Connect's Learning Center is one of our alternative schools, and they have a school board night on May 17th, 2018, from 5:30 to 7:00. If you've never visited Connect's, it's worth taking a look there and meeting our students that are there, and you can hear about their stories. I've been there before when they had graduation, but it looks like they're doing this instead. I'm not able to go because I have a CISA one board meeting that night. But they do want an RSVP, so if you want to go, please check your email. And if you didn't get it, let me know, and I'll, I'll send forward you mine. Any other announcements? School board calendar. We have a regular board meeting Wednesday, May 9th, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock PM, and a regular board meeting Wednesday, May 23rd, 2018, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock PM. Item 11, reports and presentations and other school business. Item A, approval of the 2018-2019 wage agreement between the Franklin Public Schools, School Board and the Franklin Education Association. That is an action item, Stella Hausen.
Good evening. Mr. Milzer and I had the opportunity to meet with the FEA under the authority of the Board with respect to base wage bargaining on April 11th. Through that negotiation, we agreed to a 0% base wage increase as the Board is being asked to approve the 2.13% wage increase in supplemental pay. The 2.13% wage increase is equivalent to the CPI as calculated for the upcoming year. So that is where we at. If approved tonight, we'll have a, we'll move forward with the ratification of the contract with the FEA with respect to the base wage increase, and then the 2.13% is within the budget.
Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 111.70 to approve the Franklin Education Association Wage Agreement that provides a 0% base wage increase and to approve a 2.13% wage increase in supplemental pay. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gamble. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrovich. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mrs. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Gamble.
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen.
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Aye.
And I say yes.
Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you.
Before we move on, I think Mr. Milzer and I would just like to take a minute to share that at the conclusion of the base wage bargaining with the FEA, the FEA representative, Mr. Huber, asked that we thank the Board for the many years in which the Board has granted the CPI increase and in many years even higher than the CPI increase. And so for that, they wanted you to know that they were grateful and to express that appreciation.
Thank you for passing that on. Thank you. Item 11B is the approval of the 2018-19 wage increase for non-represented employees excluding the district administrator. Mrs. Sally Hausen, or Mr. Milzer?
I'll take this one.
Okay.
It's fairly self-explanatory. This is the non-represented group, so this is the group that is not in a union. It's the same 2.13%, which matches the CPI determined by the state for July 1. So the administration's recommending approval of a wage increase pool of 2.13% for the non-represented group excluding the district administrator, which would come later.
All right, thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to approve a 2018-2019 wage increase pool of 2.13% for all non-represented employees excluding the district administrat, administrator. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Witkowski, a motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, did I hear you say including the district administrator?
Excluding.
Including, okay. All right, I thought you said including.
Sorry. Any other discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Gamble.
Yes.
Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen.
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Larson.
Aye.
And I say yes.
Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11C is the new early college credit program approvals and the Start College Now. This is an action item, Mr. Bolo. Hi there.
Hi, and good evening. I believe you all have the memo with the recommendations that we have from nine different students covering a gambit of courses. On the bottom of the same memo that you have, it does include the ideas under which we could look at a course and say we offer a comparable course. And in that case, we could deny the request from the students. So reminder, the early college credit program is the replacement for youth options. And course options, in this case, youth options had the deadline that we're looking at right now. So we approve this for fall, there's October 1st deadline then for the spring semester. So in these cases, these courses would, in our estimation, not be equivalent to courses we currently offer that students can indeed take. They would all count for credit of one shape or form, and they would be at a university. The credits transfer, one quarter credit per, okay, one college credit that's issued. I'll say at this time, I do believe that our teachers continue to explore opportunities to add rigor to their curriculum and explore dual credit opportunities, you know, whenever possible. As we look at that opportunity, sometimes there's things beyond our control in terms of higher education and credentialing, but we're going to continue to explore partnerships that can offer more things for our students on our campus. That being said, the state has the program that we're talking about here, and these course requests, again, would meet our recommendation to be approved for these students.
Okay, can we ask questions?
Yeah.
So were any requested that you did find to be comparable or comparable?
Typically through the school counseling and/or counseling from someone like myself, we will talk to students if, for example, they say, "This is a course that I would like to take," and we want them to make good choices. So part of our comprehensive school counseling that we do, we want them to not, okay, wander in and say, "I want to take Calculus I" or Multicultural Lito or something like that. So we will usually say to students, if they're planning on doing that, this is a course we have. And in this case, you know, these students are typically past curriculum we have. In one case, a student has a career pathway, and they want to go to a certain university, and they're looking at that university's undergrad requirements, and they're literally grabbing GenEds. And I looked, I'm like, well, I can't yell at you too much for choosing to take advantage of a state program that, you know, is here with us. And in those cases, again, you know, the students having that idea to talk to a school counselor, or in some cases, they'll come to an administrator like me and say, you know, "This is a course I'd want to take," and I'll say, "We have that course." And then they don't make their request. And if there's a way for a student still to make the course happen at Franklin High School or to find a course that maybe isn't equivalent per the state's definition, but fits in their schedule and they haven't explored, we'll encourage them to do so because none of these courses are guaranteed to fit in their schedule at a time and day that works, transportation's provided by the family. There are, you know, challenges to taking a course at a local university that quite frankly is up to the family to figure out. So we want to make sure it's a good fit and make sure that the students understand what they're missing when they choose to leave, because they're going to have to lose something in their schedule oftentimes that they don't get a lot of choice on, because the courses will fit wherever the college schedules them.
So this is almost like a menu. They're not necessarily going to be taking all these. These are just what they're seeking approval for.
So of course, a student can take two courses per semester and up to 18 credits per their lifetime as a student. That's what the state allows us to, I think, put in as a maximum, and we've chosen to put that in as a maximum. So 18 credits total and two classes per semester.
Question on the Spanish classes. Because we have, they can earn Spanish college credit already. How, how would this be, you know, Spanish grammar be different than? Can't they leave Franklin and almost already have a minor in a language?
So there's a CAP Spanish that we have, which is, I want to say 218 or 214. I forgot the exact equivalent at EWA Shkosh that our students can currently take. These courses go beyond that even. So these are students who've typically taken our CAP Spanish. Some already took CAP Spanish, not just last year, but the year before last. And these students are further accelerated in Spanish. So these are courses beyond that 200-level Spanish course that we currently have. Most often times, there are 300-level classes that would get them further in that Spanish curriculum at a college.
That's the same conversation I had last time we had this in front of us, and they had already taken the CAP and already moved well beyond that, so, so, yeah.
And there is a, there is a CAP course that would be another advanced course that we haven't added to our, you know, course catalog, but it would be another course down there. And when they earn the 200-level credit, most EWE institutions, they would give the retro credits that you're speaking to. That oftentimes, again, give them a leg up when it comes to having credit towards college for things like registration, if they decide to go into Spanish, items like that.
And is there state funding for this?
And is there state funding for this?
Yeah, the, the state will reimburse out of a pool of dollars, depending on the number of requests that come in, up to 25% of the total cost. But that, that amount will be reduced by the amount of applications that come in because it's a fixed pool of dollars that they're working from.
And is the allocation to each district or statewide, speaking of the?
It, it'll go to the local district, but it's, the, the requests come in statewide into the same pool of funds and then that's dispersed out to the local districts. So we'll, we'll submit to the state how many applicants that we approved and then they will give us a prorated set of dollars back. You got it?
We don't have a Franklin allocation that we have to divvy up here.
Right.
It's across the state. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the new early college credit program approvals and Start College Now as presented. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Extention, motion carries. Thank you. Next is item 11D, the adoption of the personal finance literacy standards. And we had Mr. Cohen and, okay, Mr. Cohen?
Good evening. This is a request that piggybacks on our agenda item from last meeting, the report on our progress in the district around personal financial literacy. And so tonight, based on that information, we're seeking an action item for the board to formally adopt the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards for Personal Financial Literacy as the basis for our financial literacy instruction moving forward.
Hold that motion?
Yes, you can make that motion.
I most definitely want to make that motion.
As stated by Mr. Cohen.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Nielsen and a second by Mr. Lewis. Is there any discussion?
Happy to see it happen.
Pardon?
Happy to see it happen.
I, we were discussing it earlier and I will say that out of the 400 people that we had in our company, I had 25% of them in some type of lean or garnishment or tax levy. And this is sorely needed. At whatever level you start, it can't start soon enough.
It's a class that's, well, prior to, prior to this coming to, in the play, it was a class that has seen more, gotten more and more exposure over the years, was talking about it. And I really like the idea that they're going to have multiple options to be able to satisfy this requirement and having an online course to be able to take, I think is something that will definitely fit into everybody's, everybody's schedule. And so I think that's a great way of coming at it. It's going to have, they're going to have plenty of opportunities to get their credit and to not have that be an offset, have that be an add-on, make it 20 and a half. There's still plenty of opportunities to get your credit, so it was well designed, well put together, so thanks.
Maybe it's unfortunate that it's only half a credit.
It's one semester, I guess. Yeah, that's true.
Alright. My only thought is that, you know, isn't that what parents and families are supposed to do? My thought.
I think there's a lot of ground covered in there, I don't know that. I think, I think sometimes if the kids hear that from their parents, it's going to have one level of impact. Sure, you, you know that. And if they hear, hear it in, in school, they're, it's a whole nother level of impact. Plus, they're not only going to get it in one place. When they're going to get it, you're talking about having this start earlier and earlier and so they're going to be getting dribs and drabs throughout their time through Franklin. But the, with the mantra being college and career and life ready, and this is going to fit right into that.
I guess my comment there would be, did your parents ever teach you about credit card interest? Or did your parents ever teach you not to take out 401K loans? These are the things that need to be discussed just to get people on the right track as far as their own personal finances.
Things change so fast.
Pardon?
Things change and products change so fast also.
Interest calculations, don't?
Math? Basic math?
No.
So, I mean, I'm not going to oppose it, I just think that we, you know, it's a little, kind of a creep going on here on what, you know, what do families and parents do? So.
Well, remember, we had econ as a requirement not that long ago. And then we were told that there are other courses that gave us that same type of information and I don't know that it really ended up being that way. And so I think, I think it's good to have something like this back in, but even more focused on financial literacy instead of the broad base, just general econ, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, a motion by Mr. Nielsen, second by Mr. Lewis, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
And next is item 11B, academic and technical education excellence scholarship approvals. Want to remind the board that this is, information included in this is confidential. And I'll go to Mr. Bolo, yeah? Is this two motions, is that?
Yeah, I would do those two separate motions.
I believe the first memo that you have would speak to the academic excellence scholars. And these would be the students then that should they chose to go to a state institution, they would have a tuition value applied to this. And you'll notice on there again, it's our four years. And these are students who typically we look at as being in the top portion of their class, the top four students that come through their overall grades. So we look at those individuals, again, they're on there. And should one of those top four not want the scholarship or go to a school that wouldn't qualify, then we'll follow the next student in line and that would keep going on down. So it'd be the academic excellence scholarship nominees that require your approval. And notice we have four nominees per our enrollment count and that's dictated by how many students we have.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the academic excellence scholarship nominees as presented. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble, is there any discussion? Just, I'm just curious, so the value of this is 2250 per year?
I believe it's been capped at that since the 90s, unless I'm overly mistaken.
Changed?
Ah.
Through all the tuition increases?
When I was in college, I advocated for that once. That was, that's neither here nor there, yeah.
Wow, okay.
Yeah. It used to be.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
The second memo would be for our technical excellence scholarship nominees. Again, these would be four nominees. These students are chosen based on the semester credits they've earned in career and technical education courses. They must have indicated career plans related to a career in technical education. And again, this would be 2250 per year is applied to tuition and must be used within state and can be used at any tech college in the state. So whether it's MATC or WCTC or NWTC or anything in between. So those indicators then give students points. And then again, if a student chooses not to use it or go somewhere else, it will follow for the next student in line as well. Students cannot earn both the technical excellence scholar and the academic excellence scholar as indicated on the memo.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the technical excellence scholarship nominees as presented. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries, thank you. Item 11F is the board retreat date discussion. You were asked to bring calendars, I'm not sure that we will come up with a date tonight, but maybe we can get an idea of what we can't use as a date. Last year, we ended up with a retreat in August and it was on a weeknight. I believe we can discuss, do we want a weeknight or a weekend date? Last year, we ended up having Dr. Miller send out a, what did you call it?
Doodle.
Doodle poll.
Doodle poll.
A poll to see several dates that would work for the board. Mr. Lewis, the retreat then, it, it usually lasts, like our last retreat was 5:30 until 9:00 and included a, a little meal at the beginning. We've had them on a weekend, years ago, it would last a little longer than that. So is there consensus with the board if we would like a nighttime retreat or a weekend retreat? That would help first.
I would prefer weekday.
Weekday.
All my weekends in August are filled.
And it doesn't have to be in August, but, Dr. Miller?
All my weekends are filled.
You preferred that last year. Okay.
So am I, I second.
weekends are precious.
Yeah, okay, so it, it's fine to do a night, a nighttime one. And you've preferred last year, August, because you had something you wanted to do with your team, with goals. Do you still prefer that this year?
I do, because it'll allow me to share what our focus is with the board, which will help you shape your goals. So I would say that, that's a better fit.
So if we look in August, and it would help Dr. Miller maybe choose some dates to send out to us, does anyone have a, a set vacation right now for a whole week in August?
First, this, week of the 6th, I'm busy every day that week.
Okay, so the whole week of the 6th?
Yep.
Okay. No one else has a whole week at this time?
Not, not.
So then, what about, what about the directors? And, but we'd like to have you there.
We, we're pretty much here in August. We're really, really busy in August, so I don't think, maybe a day or two, someone will be gone, but we don't take our vacations in August.
So I suppose if we get this sent out soon then?
Sure.
And skipping the first week of August?
Sure, I'll, I'll use that doodle survey again and put several dates and we'll do it from there.
Okay. And this time, Dr. Miller and I, and we were talking, perhaps maybe one board member would like to be involved in helping plan this year, plan the retreat. I don't know if anyone would be interested, you don't have to, but it's an option, I mind. You would like to?
Sure.
Okay. Just for something different, but, you know, the, one of the main ideas is to formulate goals, but we can come up with another idea also.
Alright.
Okay, so let's get a date first. Okay, thank you. There's a lot of things on here.
NSBA conference.
11G, the NSBA conference report, Mrs. Witkowski, Mrs. Larson and Dr. Miller.
I'll go. We, Dr. Miller, Mrs. Witkowski and I, we were all fortunate enough to see Terry Bradshaw in person. He was, I thought he was an excellent speaker, he was funny and he was very passionate about family and public education and so I, I did really enjoy hearing that. It made me sad, I was telling Mr. Reuter, he never spoke about Aaron Rodgers though. He talked about other football players, but never mentioned Aaron Rodgers, that made me a little sad. We also got to hear from Ann Compton, she was the White House correspondent who was with President Bush when September 11th happened. And so she chronicled her, her day with him that day and when he, they finally dropped him off at a secured location and how she had asked him some final questions and then took off and was not allowed to be with him anymore. But that was a very, it just made me feel so, I felt very patriotic listening to it and it also just made me feel so proud to be an American at that point. On Monday, I was fortunate to hear Julian, Julian Castro, he's the former US Secretary of Housing and Urban Development and he's the former mayor of San Antonio. And he talked about all of the reforms that the public education went through in San Antonio and how now their schools have become so much more successful. That same day, I also got to see a video, which I recommend to everyone to watch and it's called "No Ordinary Day" and it's about public education. You can either view it on YouTube or you can go to StandUpForPublicSchools.org and view this video. But it just highlighted all of the good things that happen in public education that we don't always have the opportunity to see, we always seem to hear the bad things and the sad things that happen, but we don't get to see the good things that happen. And so that was a very inspirational video that was shared at the closing session. I was a little disappointed, I would say, that there were not very many mental health sessions at this, this year's convention. I did get to go to an opioid session on it. And something that struck me as very interesting was that there is no evidence that says that opioids relieve pain. There's no studies, there have never been a study saying that any of the opioids actually do relieve pain better than any other than the counter medication. In fact, there was a doctor and a nurse there that said they wish that the two drug companies that make Motrin and Tylenol would come out and say that if you take Motrin and Tylenol together, they do better than Oxycodone and Oxycontin for pain relief. So I thought that was interesting. There was someone there from an insurance company who said that in school district, the top five drugs that are used by school staff members are pain medications. They talked about the school liaison officers in schools that they felt they should be trained in mental health issues. And there's a new app that's coming out that you can have on your phone, it's MHU app. And if you go to that app and go to the stigma, stigma busters portion of that app and put in your zip code, you can get mental health information for your area around you. I went to a transgender session and it talked about including our transgender population in schools and now that it's becoming more prevalent. And there was also another excellent video there that interviewed some transgender students who had been through high school and are now adults. And they just talked about different things that school districts can do to make those children feel more included. One thing that I thought was interesting too, because families have changed now the way they look, there's not always a mom and a dad. They suggested that forms that parents fill out for their children should not say mother and father, they should just say relationship to child and have the, the people there fill those forms out like that. Another session I went to was from the Riverview School District and, in Washington State. And it was on having student representatives at school board meetings. And to be perfectly honest, I've never been a big fan of it, I just doesn't, doesn't seem to work here. Well, it works there for them very well. And I brought some brochures back, which I will share with you. But they really make it an important role for their school board with their student representatives. They have an, an application process and an interview process and they use two students, actually. They take a junior and a senior. So the junior kind of shadows that senior all the way along the year and then takes the role of the senior who graduated. And then there's a new junior to take their place. And they, they are, they sit right at the table, they were at the convention with their school board this year. And they have the kids completely participate in their school board meetings. I don't know if they're voting members, but they, they have a lot of participation. And the, the two girls that are their representatives right now were there at the convention and they spoke and they did their own part of the, the talk, the session. I also went to another session where they used student roundtable discussions, which I thought was a really great idea. So they asked school guidance counselors for recommendations of students and they were not your typical school leaders. They picked out other students who are maybe not as vocal as a school leader or maybe not involved in as many things. And they had roundtable discussions with their school board members. And they got to talk, it was a 90-minute session with dinner included, so that was sort of an enticement to get the kids to come. But they were able to have conversations with these kids who are not those standout star stellar students that we see so often, who could ask questions and talk about things that they felt they were missing out on at the high school and what they were interested in. And there, one student didn't even know that there was actually a career counselor in their own high school building and didn't find that out until they had come to this roundtable discussion with board members and things like that. So I thought that was a very cool idea. I went to a session on foster children in our schools. I went to, I saw part of the session that Dr. Miller talked about with the newspaper from the schools and I, that was a very exciting session to listen to, that part that I got to hear. All in all, I thought it was a great conference. Mrs. Witkowski and Dr. Miller and I, we want to sign our board up to go to Costa Rica or something and build a school, so we have to apply for that, so we talked about doing that.
Have you done that yet?
We got the information on that. Uh, we got the information on that. I have that. And so we have to apply for that. So we're gonna try and give that a shot.
Yeah.
But, um, all in all, it was a great conference and, um, had a good time with my board colleagues.
We froze though.
We did freeze. I mean, we did.
Toys.
I was, I did not pack appropriately.
We had a cold tablecloth off, off the table just to wrap ourselves.
Right, we went to an event at night and people were removing the tablecloths and they were wrapping up in the tablecloth at night. And we all huddled around one of those, um, towers that have the heat on it. One of the, yeah, we were just, we all stood like this. And then finally, we could jump on a bus. We were like, we're taking the bus. We gotta leave. It's too cold, so.
Before we move on to Mrs. Witkowski, I think, uh, thank you for bringing that up about the students. Um, not everyone here knows that, and you know, and Mrs. Witkowski knows that in two thousand nine, we, the board did approve having a student, having student reps not sit at the table, but come to board meetings. And I did mention it to Mr. Volo when he came on and I mentioned it to Judy and I mentioned it every year, but we do have difficulty, as you said, getting student interest. Um, it, it's a good thing.
I was going to say, that forensic student, you know.
I'll let you know there, um, while Mr. Volo over here has started a group called SIS within our school where we have a weekly discussion on the issues within the school. I'd say we've had about thirty people attending every week pretty consistently, if I'm not completely wrong.
But the issue, the issue is it's a commitment to come to here every, twice, twice a month.
I'm sure there's someone who's committed, but we'd also always invite you all to attend one of our meetings. If you are, I know you were discussing this several times in which students discuss. We've got the same kind of thing going on a little bit under the radar, but we just started it this year.
That's great, yeah.
I can follow up on that too, Debbie. Did they get into any, any kind of details or more information about how they, more details on how, what kind of information they pass along to the students that are part of the board? Clearly, there's some things that are in the packet that are.
No, they actually did not mention that. Cause you're right, there are things that are confidential. I wouldn't go to them.
Cause those are some stumbling blocks right there.
They did not mention that, but I have, I have the brochure and I also have the school's website. And I got, um, a business card to contact them for more information.
There are boards in Wisconsin that do, that do have, like, I think Greendale has two student members on their board. Um, I think New Berlin might have one. Did your board have? Yeah, they can't vote, but they can sit. But we didn't vote on that, but we could always change a vote if we had committed interest, but it's a good point to bring up.
But they, I mean, they had an application process, so the kids that applied, they were willing to put in the time to make the commitment.
So it is a commitment.
Yeah.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Okay, um, I did share notes in advance. I'm not gonna cover everything. One thing that was different was they had a community service project. So I did, um, help out repacking food for the San Antonio Food Project. It was kind of an interesting experience because you're, we had to take these big fifty pound bags of beans and rice and then put them in a smaller packets. So you're standing across the table and just talking to other board members, you know. So it's a very, it's a conversation why you're doing something good. And the one lady that was there that I, she, she was the only returning board member of a seven-member board. It was an interesting story. So stuff happens out there, so you get to hear about that. Um, uh, she mentioned the general, opening general session. I think you hear equity a lot more. I think that was kind of a theme, I thought, in this conference. It was kind of new. You know, and that involves racial, social, economic and disabilities, how we can make school accessible to all our students. Um, I did go to Disrupting Poverty, uh, Turning High Poverty Schools Into High Performing Schools. I mean, this was done as a, as a research element, so there, there are ways, there are techniques that they know about that can close the gap. And I would think we, and it's about building relationships and part of it is about how we think about students, you know, our own thoughts, whether a teacher really thinks that, can, can actually, um, improve. That's part of the, uh, what they've learned about what makes these, uh, schools successful. And I also did go to the Culinary Institute of America, the San Antonio campus. So, um, it's a wonderful campus and they, uh, gave us the food update, you know, new trends in food, which is fascinating when you think about it. You probably all experienced it, how, you know, how, um, your grocery store is changing, you know, how you go and get prepared foods, how we're getting delivery of food. So it's an industry that's, um, it's around and changing rapidly. Um, they did, um, we did have a demonstration of, uh, students that were in a food class at one of the high schools. And, um, it was, um, it was good. They made, they made a good, good food. It was a, an ethnic dish that I wasn't familiar with, but it's a rice and it's, um, paella, paella?
Paella, paella.
Paella. So, um, but they, the students that were, uh, preparing this, they had, apparently there's contests, just like there's barbecue contests. They had these contests. And her particular recipe did win the contest. So I also looked at, uh, visual data, how to improve, um, strategic planning initiatives, um, redefining communications and leadership in the digital world. You know, that's important, um, getting our message out. Another term I, I kind of came across was student agency. I'm not sure what that means, but, I don't know, can you define that for me?
Developing independence.
Developing, okay, cause they, uh, it was a school that invited kids to create these digital portfolios so they could own their learning and, you know, share what they'd learned. It was all voluntary though, it wasn't anything that they required. Um, also, um, a district in Twin Cities that really focused on innovative planning and how they changed, how they thought, um, involving their, their teachers and having clear roles and responsibilities. I thought that was also interesting in how they, um, focused on data. One of my interests is on data. So I did also go to the, um, the expo, cause you have to go through and look at all the stuff to pick up. So, um, one was the, and actually Debbie's the one that showed us this.
I brought mine too. I showed Mr. Volo already.
The table that replicates the, the body. You can peel back, so, skin and get to the bones and.
TV is here.
Yeah, that was pretty interesting. This was someone promoting happiness. And Jim, my favorite, best practices in school budgeting. I would give it to you now, but I wanna read it first, okay?
If that isn't happiness, I don't know what is. There's the pinnacle right there.
Um, what else?
Turning red.
Schools are, this is, uh, I, I mentioned to you about how we monitor social media. This was one, uh, company that I just had to share up with you. You know, and school nutrition is, um, there's a lot of companies out there that also, uh, wanna provide your food service and, you know, just go through and taste their offerings. So that was, um, my experience. Um, and I guess I would end by saying, you know, going to the conference is kind of like, you know, again, drinking water from fire holes cause I get all this information coming at you. But then, after you leave though, the conference, it's like having, uh, the drip hole is still connected to the water and you just kind of have it dripping, kind of keeping, giving you ideas in the back of your mind. And I think that's important also. So, that's my experience.
Thank you. I also included, actually, those are my actual notes I was taking during the session, so, um, if they don't make a lot of sense, it's because I was just typing things as quickly as I could as I was listening to people. So I went to a couple of sessions, um, on the learning environment and, um, how we, how the learning environment is changing. The first one, I met this interesting, uh, woman. Her name was Dr. Xu. And she is an environment, uh, environmental behavior researcher. So this is, you know, her job to look at environments and determine what environments work best. And, um, she works with a company, an architectural firm that, um, does designs for schools and builds schools. And I just brought a picture of one of the schools they worked on and what that, that classroom looks like. And, um, certainly things are changing quite a bit. Um, one of the things that she does is she studies very carefully how teachers spend their time and, um, how much time they spend doing certain things in the classroom. So things like studying, moving, assessing, creating things, lecturing, performing, socializing. So studying all of those things and making sure that the learning space accommodates those things. So my big takeaway was, um, in that first session was good architects do post occupant evaluations to see how the building is performing. So as we build our new school, um, I, you know, I feel it's really important that we have those conversations with our architects and we, we look at the decisions we've made and make sure that they align with what we're doing in terms of creating the right learning environment. And then the other takeaway was we need to think of schools as human development centers. So they're not classrooms anymore, they're human development centers. So that was really interesting. Um, I went to another, um, session on, um, working with educational foundations. Um, and that was really interesting as well. I met someone who works with the National School Foundation Association there, so I didn't even know such a thing existed. And, um, the particular foundation that, um, she was affiliated with, larger school district, twenty thousand students. They raised like two million dollars a year for that school district. But they have twelve employees that work, uh, for the foundation that are employed by the district. So it's a really different arrangement. But my big takeaway there was that, um, if you work with a foundation, you really should have a memorandum of understanding around how you will work together. So I thought that was good and I, I obtained a sample of that. Uh, another session I went to, it was on social emotional learning. And the presenter was representing Alaska. So it was highly interesting just to learn about the school districts in Alaska. And how they approach, uh, social emotional learning. So there was a nice handout for that one as well. So I won't go into detail around that, but, um, they do, um, some really advanced work in the state of Alaska around social emotional learning. Julie's shaking her head. So that was really quite informative. Um, I went to another session on building a master's facility, uh, facilities plan. And this was, uh, Lincoln Public Schools in Nebraska. Um, there are thirty-two elementaries, twelve middle schools and six high schools, so a rather large district. And I listened to how they, um, had a process facilitated by an outside facilitator by which they did a physical assessment, uh, an educational assessment and a financial assessment and developed a, a very detailed master plan, um, that they track, um, over time and is updated, um, sometimes daily based on what work is being done. So I wanted to learn more about what these master, uh, plans look like for facilities. So that was informative. Um, I went to a session called, uh, Twenty Thirty Five Education, What Will This Look Like? And it was pretty interesting. Um, I, a couple of the notes, the highlights from the notes are fifty percent of the jobs are at risk of replacement in twenty years. Virtual, virtual reality is coming to schools, you know, those goggles that you see kids wearing. You know, it won't be long, we'll be having those in the classrooms and that'll be incorporated into the learning environment. Batch-based education is inconsistent with what people want. Um, so this was interesting. They said that, um, young people, when a Netflix series comes out, they don't watch it one episode at a time. They wait for it to be completely out and then they sit down and watch the whole thing. So that's how they, you know, they, there was, there was some, um, connection there to how kids learn. They, they want to sit down and really immerse themselves in, in something instead of getting in batches, small batches. So I, I thought that was pretty interesting, uh, thing that, uh, was brought forward. Uh, the class of twenty twenty will have at least fifteen different careers and jobs over the forty years they work. The retirement age is likely to push to seventy. Uh, many more jobs, um, will come out of what they call a gig economy. So people don't go to a company and do a job and stay there and work there for a number of years. They go to a job where they do a gig. They do a project, if you will, for a company or something that needs to be done within a company. And then they leave and go to another company and do a project there. They take on gigs, if you will, at different companies. So it's a different way of working than, uh, traditionally used to. So, you know, they have a skill set. They take it with them to a company. They do a job, they leave and then they go to another place.
So that'll put it on them to be in charge of their own retirement, financial literacy.
Yeah.
And their own healthcare.
Yeah. So drones, um, is something, um, artificial intelligence, AI is very big. Let's see, there's just a number of really interesting things that, um, are coming our way that we need to be aware of and incorporate into the learning environment.
And what was the name of that session again?
Uh, Twenty Thirty Five Education, What Will This Look Like? Um, and then I did go to a session regarding, um, public relations and media. And there was a school district who wasn't getting any, um, coverage from the local paper at all. Now I'm super frustrated.
That would have reminded me immediately.
So they, um, now publish their own newspaper. So they were able to get local, uh, sponsors to pay for the person who does the writing and the printing of the paper through, um, running their ads in it. It was a local car dealership, if you will. And, um, they get more, um, out of advertising in that local newspaper for the school district than they do anywhere else because it's guaranteed to get in the hands of every student and every family in the district. So.
I know how that model works.
It was, uh, you know how it works? Yeah?
Yep, I worked with one of those for about five years.
Oh, okay, okay.
But is it paper-based?
It's a newspaper, yeah. You can get it digitally, but it is an actual physical newspaper. You can buy it at the local QuickTrip if you want for a dollar twenty-five. And of course, if you're a parent, you get it for free, so.
And that's was one of the points they made in the other seminar, that you are a media outlet as a district.
Mm-hmm. I think our public would love it.
So I didn't bring it with me. I should have brought it with me.
I'm so disappointed that the now is gone. And you, you know, you have complete control over what's in your newspaper too. And it's a, it's a positive thing, so. And it's a, it's a great way to inform the parents and the community about the work. So that was interesting.
Be the ultimate in community outreach. I mean, that would be a perfect tool right there.
So it was interesting. Um, so just a couple of final thoughts. I learned a lot about the Alamo.
We kept sending Judy there.
Yeah, I, I did quite understand everything about it, but I went back and I read everything that they had there about the Alamo. So that was fun.
So it is important.
Yeah.
You don't have to understand it, you just have to remember it.
Yeah. Yeah, it was fun.
I don't know about that. You're in Texas, you have to do more remembering.
And then I just, I wanna say I'm really thankful for our board. I, um, don't wanna say anything disparaging about other board members, but, um, I, in, in the sessions I was in, I was glad that I worked with you. So, thank you.
Glad we work with you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, eleven H, the treasures report can be found in the board docs library. Item twelve, liaison reports, uh, twelve A, the personnel and policy, report policy sixty-three ten, graduation policy, Ms. Ellahausen.
Nope, oh, I'm sorry.
Wow, that scared me there for a minute.
I used to go over there for Dr. Miller.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I actually am going to defer to Mr. Kohn, um, because he did do the redraft on the policy, which, um, is a policy that we intended to review and revise, but given the new standards around financial literacy, there was even more to do around the policy. So again, Mr. Kohn did draft the revisions and can respond to your questions. I'll turn it over to you now.
Yeah, I would invite Mr. Volo up as well. Uh, Mr. Reuter and Mr. Volo and I all kind of worked on this. Uh, there are really three distinct changes to the policy that I wanted to just quickly walk you through. Uh, the first is the changes we discussed last meeting regarding the personal financial literacy graduation requirement. Uh, and so you see the, the language reflecting the phase in of that half-credit requirement, beginning with the class of twenty twenty-three. Uh, and so we, we highlighted the current requirements that will last through the twenty twenty-two graduating class and then what that'll look like the following year. Uh, so that was the, the first set of changes. Uh, the second change was in response to the civics exam, uh, graduation requirement. Uh, the last biennial budget, uh, increased the amount of correct responses needed on that test from sixty to sixty-five. Uh, and so our policy needs to reflect that, that change in statute. So that was that, that increase. And then on page two, the, the third change was related to our, uh, alternative programming. Uh, and I wanted to just walk you through a couple of pieces related to that. Uh, as our current language stands, uh, the implication is that students who are in Saber Academy or in an alternative program at the high school are taking courses or in an alternative program at the high school are taking courses in a compartmentalized way. So I'm taking the equivalent of a full semester of English to receive one-half credit, I'm still accumulating credits in that program, and I still have to reach the 28 credits to graduate. And the reality is that alternative programs don't really operate that way anymore. In, in their current state, most alternative programs seek to integrate courses in a way that is a little more unique than that. I'll give you an example. Imagine a student who's completing a 12-week service learning project. In that project, they're identifying an environmental issue, perhaps they're doing some experimentation as a part of that, they're doing research, they're having to write a report or respond in a public forum around that service learning project, and there are elements of science, of math, of literacy that are embedded in that. And so a student through that 12-week project might display a deep mastery of some of those skills or some of those standards in those areas, and thus meet some of the graduation requirements in all three of those subject areas, without having to take a full semester course in each of those subjects by themselves in isolation. And so the language change that we're proposing kind of eliminates that, that expectation that students in that program take separate courses individually and still have that length of time that's associated with a credit, and instead gives the flexibility to Mr. Volo and to the program itself to be designed in a way where students who are in the program can meet the program requirements and thus meet their requirements for graduation, without earning that 28 credits listed as separate courses. And so, you know, again, we, we bring that language forward to seek to, to update that and have it be more reflective of the work that's occurring. And I would also point out that that decision and this language has evolved along some of the work that's also happening at the high school this year. The Saber Academy, our current in-house alternative program that complements Connect's Learning Center, that you heard Ms. Evans talk about earlier, there was a team that began a review of that program this fall, and we're looking to, to make some changes to that program, really to begin piloting next school year and then phasing in over the course of the next couple of years. And at the May 23 board meeting, some members of that committee will be here to share that information with you and talk about the future of Saber Academy and where it's going. And so some of this language that we're proposing a change to supports the work that that team's been doing and really aligns with the future direction of that programming. So with that, any of the three of us would be happy to respond to questions in any of those change areas.
Questions. So item A talks about an alternative education program as defined by Wisconsin State Statute 115. What, what is that statute?
Yeah, the statute just, yeah, identifies, you know, the characteristics of an alternative program and that students can earn accelerated credit through that, that program. So it gives school boards and local districts the ability to create a program separate from the typical high school environment that's staffed by licensed alternative education teachers.
And the, we approve that, or the board doesn't approve that, though, it's just, it has to meet the state requirement.
Yeah, and the board has approved Saber Academy in the past as an alternative program at the high school, as you would any other courses.
So those are the types of programs you're talking about, like almost credit recovery and things like that?
Yeah.
Not like a whole separate high school path?
It's not a charter school, yeah, it's not a separate school or pathway, it's, it's an alternative program for students who, despite a variety of supports, have not been successful in a traditional environment and need an alternative way of being educated in order to reach those same outcomes.
So, and they're earning credit, but not based on seat time?
Yeah, and this change of language would propose that students don't actually have to earn credit, that they would meet the same requirements or demonstrate the same level of proficiency as if they had taken a course and completed credits. So Mr. Volo would determine through all this coursework, you've demonstrated the same level of mastery or proficiency in math as a student who took four years of math or three years of math in these courses, thus you've met the graduation requirement around math.
How are they going to demonstrate that?
What's the transcript going to look like?
Yeah, so those are both good questions, I can, I can kind of take them both, and then Mr. Volo, feel free to jump in. In terms of the, you know, the, the ways that they would demonstrate it or what that looks like, the instructors have to design the assessment methodology that we're going to use alongside the, the competencies that we've identified. So you take the set of standards, you say, these are the things that by the end of graduation or by the end of 12th grade, they have to demonstrate mastery of or proficiency of, and then here's all the ways we're going to assess that. Could be through an online curriculum, could be through a project, could be through a work-based learning experience, like an internship, right? But in the program, students will complete it this way, and then will determine their success in terms of doing that, and then that will satisfy the requirements. In terms of the transcript, we have students now who are completing alternative programming, right, in a variety of ways, and so the transcript would highlight that they've completed the graduation requirements. And then typically what happens is if those students are applying to college, there's a letter that goes along with that that explains the programming that they completed, what the pieces of that were, and how they've satisfied our graduation requirements. And we've had a, a number of students who have completed alternative programs and gone on to college and been successful.
So could they have some, earned some credits and then they fill in the gaps with?
Yeah, typically these programs, students don't kind of jump into them freshman year, they're typically junior, senior programs, so yes, it's, it's likely a student will have accumulated some credits, and then they would move into a program and then complete.
Is the high school diploma, diploma the same, or has it got a little asterisk next to it?
Franklin High School diploma. They have satisfied our graduation requirements.
And the GP, there's a GPA that is coordinated with that?
Yeah, all of it's on a pass-fail basis typically, or a you've mastered it or you haven't basis. So there is no GPA, there's no class rank associated with it, and then again, it wouldn't list separate credits, it would just say on the transcript, the student has completed the necessary requirements for graduation.
Do other diplomas list credits that are earned, or does it just says you've met the requirements, right?
Yeah, they'll typically list every class that a student has taken and the amount of credit they've earned and the grade associated with it.
Okay.
I would add, even with the transcript that we currently issue, our school profile accompanies that. So anything that someone says, what does it mean to go to Franklin High School and everything you offer, when you apply with your transcript, the school profile accompanies that to tell them what we offer, the programs, the number of AP courses, et cetera, et cetera. So an alternative program having in a company, this is what our program offers, what it does, will speak to a transcript in a similar way. So colleges are used to looking at, what does your high school provide? Because then they can say, did you take rigorous courses while you were there? Right now with transcripts, they do that. So this wouldn't be that foreign for universities and colleges and tech schools to look at things like that.
And they're used to alternative programs in high schools, they understand that that's a part of the curriculum.
What kind of numbers are we talking about on a year-over-year basis?
Just going to ask the same first question, what percentage of students?
Yeah, it, it really depends, because we have students nine through 12 with a variety of needs and a variety of programs, both some external to the, the high school and some internal to the high school. So Saber Academy students, for example, is our in-house alternative. I believe on an annual basis, you know, that the number of seats in those programs is around 24 at any given time, kind of max. And then we have some students who roll in and out of the program depending on, you know, what their specific needs were. So, you know, that could range up another 10, 15 students, or down, depending on the year and the needs. And then we have somewhere in the neighborhood of, I want to say, 16 or so students off-site at Connect's Learning Center, and then a handful of students who are at some of our other alternative sites. So not, not a high percentage of students. Again, these are students who, you know, despite numerous interventions, for whatever reason, haven't been successful, and so we need to provide them some other options.
So regarding this determination that you have to make, is it, is it looking at reports? Is this, is it an interview with the student? Is it taking assessment from the teachers who are working with them? How, how does that work?
So I think typically it speaks to the evidence that Nick had alluded to, in the program's development, like what are those core competencies we expect kids to know and be able to do by the time they're seniors and they graduate? And then planning with teachers in terms of what would acceptable evidence be? So when they assess and say, this student has earned this, so it could involve students actually presenting stuff to a panel, but typically the evidence will be presented to their teachers, right, who would then be basically saying, this evidence is here for these standards and competencies. But in the design of the program, it's the most important aspect of the, I guess, determination of that. So we design it in, you know, coordination with our teachers to make sure that that program meets the requirements that we think all our graduates should have, versus, you know, I'm sitting there sort of like this or that at the end of a, you know, period of time, or a student comes to me on a Thursday. It would be more intentional on the front end, so then we can be more, you know, deliberate on the back end. But I understand it.
So you're taking the, the results that you're getting from the teachers and looking, making sure they've satisfied the requirements?
And the program as well.
What you'll hear from the, the committee when they're here in the May 23 board meeting is, the Saber Academy instructors who are designing a lot of that are working side-by-side with the coordinators of the different departments to make sure that we're aligned, and we have common expectations around what kids are able to, to know and do, and so that level of rigor is there, and it, it meets those same outcomes.
Is that language in B descriptive enough as far as what happens? Because the first thing I looked at is, it looks like the principal is very subjective about whether he wants to go thumbs up or down on an individual.
How are you with you?
Versus maybe improving that language or modifying that language in some way stating what you mentioned to me, where criteria is established that is reviewed by the principal and et cetera, et cetera, something like that.
Because the previous language says, through completion of board-approved alternative programs. So we've removed the board-approved, inserted high school principal determines.
I would, I would indicate that the board would still approve the program, right? So, so when there are changes made to the Saber Academy, just like any other curricular change or new course change at the high school level, right, it would fall under that, that criteria, because they are, it is essentially a program with new courses. We would bring that forward, the board would still have the authority to approve that program as described in the, the content within that program.
Can we just not delete that language?
Yeah, I think the troubling word there was the word credit, to be honest, in that, that prior language.
Right, I don't have any problem. But I think board-approved alternate programs is still important.
Yeah, just take out the word credit, but leave the sentence.
And how does special ed play into this?
Could you be just a little more descriptive in the question?
How do special ed students play into this? Are they eligible for Saber Academy?
Absolutely, yeah. We have students with IEPs who are in several of our alternative programs. So, yeah, all of our programming is eligible, all students are eligible for our programming, depending on the needs, and again, we try to tailor the, the entry into those programs to the specific student, what, what they need to be successful in high school. So, yeah, we do have students with IEPs who are in our alternative programs.
So their IEP follows them into the program?
Yes. In fact, one of our Saber Academy instructors is a special education licensed instructor.
I've visited Connect's Learning Center many, many times, and I've heard the stories from the students and their parents about how, how they just couldn't make it in the regular school environment, and if they hadn't attended Connect's, they would have dropped out, and it was life-changing for them. And in hearing their stories and visiting the school and seeing what they're doing, they do a lot of volunteer work, they do a lot of team-building, and I, but I can't figure how some of the students, when they're juniors and seniors, how they're completing all the work to get a Franklin High School diploma. So I, I don't understand it, I don't know how this is working for them.
Typically, how many, I don't know, weeks do they spend in the alternative program? Is it a year? Is it a?
It really depends on the student and...
Fine, what's the range, I guess? What's the average?
We have students kind of on-ramp, I mean, I don't have the data to answer that question specifically in terms of when they start, but we have students start at various points throughout the year, whether it's in our own alternative program or it's through a program like Connect's. There are some dates, you know, Connect's would not want a student to start, you know, June 1st, for example, you know, but at the same time, it really can change as much as a student's circumstances can change. So it really is personalized per student.
Like, are they there months? What's the shortest and the longest?
So there, there are some students who are in programs multiple years.
Multiple years.
There are students who are in programs semester. There may be a student who late in senior year, needs to enter a program just to, to finish up, so it really can depend. I would say it's certainly longer than days, but weeks, months, semesters, years, depending on the program.
And I think to speak to even, when I heard Mrs. Larson talk about the mental health pieces, you know, schools and having programs that could be transition places for students who are coming in and out of treatments and other things, there's a lot of contingencies that we work with each and every day that might have a demand where a student can't be successful in a traditional, you know, AB block for the remainder of a certain period of time. And sometimes, you know, schools and programs can fit into that, you know, conversation as well, and then the students come back. So, and that's ultimately the goal, is obviously we want students to be successful in the least restrictive environment and least, you know, sort of unique environment. We also know that not every student fits in what we have.
I would imagine that that small group environment or working on their own independently can help a child be more focused and succeed just that way, just simply pulling them out of that classroom and letting them focus and, you know, have that one-on-one time that a classroom teacher just can't afford. I would think that would help them be successful, so they might be able to ramp it up and, you know, gain all of that stuff that they weren't able to being in that huge group.
So I can propose a redraft on the language here, if you want to follow along real quick. What I hear the board saying is to, to the sentence that we, we're going to eliminate to, to pull that back in. So I would propose that we keep the sentence that says, the school board may grant a high school diploma to a student who has not satisfied the credit requirements listed above if the following applies. And then below it, it would say, the student was enrolled in an alternative education program as defined by Wisconsin State Statute, lists the statute number, and has fulfilled the proficiency requirements of a board-approved alternative program.
That's how A would read?
Of the board, of the boards. Right, there wouldn't even be an A, it's just one statement.
Oh.
I'll do it again. So the, the school board may grant a high school diploma to a student who has not satisfied the credit requirements, and I could just do it this way, if the student was enrolled in an alternative education program as defined by Wisconsin State Statute and fulfilled the proficiency requirements of that program. So I think it incorporates, did I lose something?
Board-approved alternative program.
Okay.
I went board-approved alternative program.
Requirements of the board's approved alternative program, okay. All right, the school board may grant the high school diploma to a student who has not satisfied the credit requirements listed above, if the student is enrolled in a board-approved alternative education program as defined by the Wisconsin statutes.
And it's mid...
And fulfills the proficiency requirements.
So then strike B.
Right.
All together.
Right.
I think that's a decent B, right? You like that?
Yeah, that's for me.
Board-approved alternative program as defined by statute and fulfills the proficiency requirements. I think we captured it.
And how are we going to meet the personal financial literacy requirements?
Yeah, so it'll definitely be incorporated into the program.
You know, and many of our alternative students are currently and have been doing that in the programs we already have. And actually, it's sometimes a very strong component of what they do, because we do have existing coursework around personal finance, so I do know that students have typically fulfilled that in our programs we have right now, which is great.
So we're looking for a motion to approve revised board policy 6310 as revised here at the board table, as read by Dr. Miller. We hear that motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second?
Sorry, I have it.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, are there any, under liaison reports, are there any board liaison reports or board school visits?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Alexander Ovage.
I visited Ben Franklin. Sarah took me on a tour of the building. I got to see the classrooms where my two grandchildren were in. They wanted little or nothing to do with me.
Obeyary.
Yeah, I know, it's heartbroken. I was also, I think, maybe the first person to go through the security system there. And so it, it ran smoothly, it worked, worked well, didn't have too much trouble.
Yeah, I've been through Country Dales this week, too, several times.
Yeah, so that, that was good. And I stopped in at the third grade class where there'd been some discussions about what needed to be done. I was there in the afternoon, and there was a teacher, an aide, and a volunteer. And what they were working on is self-grading a test that they had taken. So I don't know if it was a, a good evaluation of how the class normally ran, but teachers seemed to have good control when the kids got a little bit loud in, in open discussion, she was able to... she was able to just calm it down real well. So, it appeared good. But again, there were there were more people there to work with the children too. And and they were concentrating on correcting the the tests that they took. So, that looked good. It was a nice visit. I was impressed with the school.
I just have two, yeah, I have two things under liaisons. I'm going to pass down liaison special assignments to the board members. If you could fill out the back sheet of these and turn them in either today or by taking a picture of it with your phone and emailing it or dropping it off in the mailbox here by May 1st would be great. And then I just want to say, at Country Dale, I received just some thank you notes from the kids from volunteering with them and they just made thank you, Mrs. Evans handwritten notes and I didn't expect it. And it's just really nice. So, I just wanted to comment that I that they take the time to do that and it's really nice to get those. So, any other liaison reports? Thank you. Reorganizational approval items, item 13. Item A is the designation of the 2018-2019 district depositories. This is an action item, Mr. Milzer.
Yes, each year the board approves the depository for the district. And we're recommending BMO Harris Bank, which is not a change from the current year. We'd like to continue with them. We don't have a service contract with them. And at the time of the report, we had about $5.1 million there.
In the checking account?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2018-2019 district depositories, the recommended BMO Harris Bank.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Why are you so disappointed? Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 13B, designation of the 2018-2019 district newspaper of record. Mr. Milzer.
Uh, this one's not mine.
Oh, okay. Who would like it? Should I just say it?
You can't say it. Do it.
The recommendation is the NOW newspapers. Let me open it up.
Or a newspaper that we're going to start.
Yeah, the recommendation would be the South NOW newspapers, parent company USA Today Network as the district newspaper of record. Do I hear a motion to accept the South NOW newspapers, parent company USA Today Newspaper Network as the district newspaper of record?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. Any discussion?
What's the circulation?
I don't know. Mike can try to find out.
What's the circulation?
What was the question?
The circulation. What's the circulation?
It's the only choice we have in Franklin.
It'll be the same as the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel.
Yep.
Because it's part of their package, whether it be in paper form or digital.
That's where I know how we were reaching. That's all I did.
Have no clue.
Well, you'd have to-
We could probably find out.
And what, if legislation is passed, then we'll get rid of this item and it will be just required on the web.
Right. Aren't they close to passing that?
Apparently, they didn't. We checked on that. And there was just the one that they passed maybe three years ago saying that we didn't have to put our minutes in and all of that, but there were still certain notices that we had to put in, class one notices. But the the newest one apparently didn't come to a vote or didn't pass because it wasn't listed.
And doesn't require a certain level of circulation or?
No.
No, okay. That didn't pass.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Nielsen, second by Mr. Gamble. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 13C, approval of the 2018-2019 school board calendar. This is an action item. So, did anyone have any comments on the calendar if you looked it over? I did want to mention that for those going to the convention, it is on a school board member, a school board meeting date, which is January 23rd. But, I mean, you just have to make it back here in time if you're going on that Wednesday. And just for Mr. Nielsen, if you are a delegate, the person that chooses to be the delegate to that, that's usually over in the afternoon, correct, on that Wednesday? Is that 1:00?
It goes to like 4:30 or something, 4:40.
So, and-
I think Mr. Alexandrovic was very interested in that position last year. I don't know if he still is this year, but we can work that out.
Yeah, we'll get up to-
Get off the opioids.
Motrin and Tylenol.
I just I just wanted to point that out. So, that's usually the first date. Most people go, so you would have to get back on quickly. Did anyone notice any other conflicts on here? Also noting that the June meeting is the 26th of June. Might not be necessary. It just depends on how much we have to do that month in the budget. Do you know when graduation will be? And the eighth grade graduation in 2019 and the high school graduation?
I can look.
Because I didn't see it on the calendar on our, you know, the-
The district calendar?
The district calendar yet. That's not all posted yet.
For 19?
For 19.
19, 19's not there. Let me just check on it for you. I'll look it up.
Well, it's okay.
Keep going now. Tell you later.
So, if anyone, so then we're looking for a motion to approve the Board of Education calendar for the 2018-2019. Is it school year? I'm looking here.
It's the school year.
Graduation would be June 2nd in 2019. And the eighth grade graduation is usually that Thursday before, which would be May 30th.
I just, I always like to check that on here.
What's that?
Wouldn't be June 6th.
Oh, June 6th. Yeah, it's not before, it's after. June 6th. Thank you very much.
So, June 6th.
June 6th is the eighth grade and then the high school graduation would be June 2nd. They would like that.
So, I know one year it was on here for a board meeting and I didn't want that to happen. Okay, so looking for a motion to approve the 2018-2019 school board calendar.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. And then item 13D is appointment of the board delegate for CISA 1 Board of Control Annual Convention. And I'd just like to mention that I'm already going to the Board of Control meeting that night. So, I would volunteer to be the delegate. If no one has objection?
So moved.
All right, there is a motion by Mr. Alexandrovic and a second by Mrs. Witkowski that I be the delegate. Is all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carry. All right. Then I am looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 9.85, Sub 1, Sub C, and F, Sub F, for discussion, consideration, and issuance of preliminary notices of non-renewal for specific employees. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say, oh, can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen.
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And Mr. Gamble.
Aye.
Can I say yes?
Motion carries 7-0. We're going to take a 10-minute recess because we're we're going to have a photo of the board, a group photo.
Oh, God.
And if we're done sooner than 10 minutes.
We wanted to close session at 7:00.
At 8:21. We are back in open session at 8:21. And I'm looking for a motion to approve the preliminary notices of non-renewal as recommended by the administration. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lewis. Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Extension. Motion carries. Thank you. And I, item 16. Oh, we just did that. I'm sorry. That was item 16. Item 17 is the Board Meeting Debriefing. Do we have any comments from the board? Welcome to the new Mr. Lewis.
Yes, thank you very much. All of the changes were-
The new Mr. Lewis, yeah. Did the name tag even change yet?
Just didn't say Lewis. Be cross-eyed, Jeff. Well, thank you. I look forward to it. I was really impressed with those forensics, Jeff. Yeah, that was awesome. Well, you know, Jeff, speaking of Jeff, he was familiar with forensics and it led to his legal career, you know. So, it helped him.
Explains a lot to me.
Oh, yeah, it's coming together.
All right, then we'll move on to item 18. Future agenda items. Official meeting agendas are posted Friday prior to the board meeting. We have A, Committee Education and Recreation Department Report and Saber Center Update. If the board would like to write down these dates for their reference, that is scheduled for May 9th. C is the International Trip Approval Scheduled for May 9th. C is the Communications Audit Report Scheduled for May 23rd. D, Education and Employment Update, May 23rd. And E is the District Administrator Update and Annual Goals and Performance Standards, May 23rd. Any other agenda items or comments?
What about the Saber Academy before thing? Yeah, do we hear about?
I think he mentioned the 23rd, so now we can add an item on the 23rd.
23rd?
Mm-hmm. And the title of the, um, yeah, I don't know. I don't know. It'd be probably Saber Academy, alternative education program, or like an open school alternative education program review or something. I'm not sure. All right, and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Witkowski. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And we are adjourned at 8:24.